I didn't know if they'd be the same or not.
No, they're not.
They're not?
Why are you now?
Which is where we got in trouble with the whole lifesaving station on the beach.
I'm gonna call the pre-council meeting to order this evening for September eighth, 2020. Uh, do we call the roll? Do we? Yes, we do, don't we? Yes.
Uh, Mr. Roskovic.
Here.
Mr. Spielman. Mrs. Foglio.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Ms. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Timmanier.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Chief Stell is running the camera tonight. Thank you.
Good. All right, we're gonna go over our agenda, but before, if you would at this time, look down to uh, the Director of Finance, and I don't know if we've had some emails concerning some court payroll, payroll issues, and these are pages ten through um thirty, or twenty-eight, I think, ten through twenty-eight of your regular agenda. And so, I'm, I'm only bringing this up at this time to feel if council is comfortable uh, dealing with these issues tonight, or do you feel uh, uh, executive session after the meeting would be merited? Uh, however you want to do that. Like I said, there's a lot, I know we were getting some emails, and it turned, it looks to be like a bigger issue than I imagine, because there's like ten pages of repeal things, right? And then ten pages, or like eighteen pages of?
Mr. President, the pages are so long because there were several um journal entries.
Okay.
Originally, I think that we had three, and then we got three more.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I was thinking. When we got them in the email at home, it didn't seem that cumbersome, but now I'm looking at this. So it's up to council. If you feel comfortable just handling this as part of our agenda tonight, we could do that, or we can um have an executive session afterwards to discuss.
Mr. President, I move that we have an executive session after the meeting. Yes, please, yes.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, I need an executive session regarding personnel on another matter anyways, so, I mean.
All right, we would do that then.
I don't need any, I don't need any action from my part of the discussion, but um, I, I.
And we'll have discussion. I don't think we'll come out for action, or we might, we'll see, but um.
So we have a motion?
Well, we can't make a motion now, but in our regular meeting, we'll announce it. Yes. Okay? Is everyone fine with that, down the, down the lane here? Okay. Down the lane. Down the dais, I should say. Okay, very good. All right, also, um, we have, so, tonight we started at six-thirty. We may um, and, and that may work well sometimes, but as we get more items to talk about, we may have to have some six o'clock meetings. And I'm thinking maybe next uh, meeting, the twenty-first, might be an opportunity to do that. Because we have an issue here, we've had a request to change the name of the street, uh, which I think is probably um, a pretty involved process, especially this particular street. Um, and so I don't know if we should send that to a committee to be discussed. Um, that would probably be a good thing to do, and then it could come out, and we could counsel to, to discuss it as a whole, maybe. And so I'm wondering what committee would best fit that, if it would be um, police, would he, Mr. Timmanier, how would that, Public Works, maybe, because you're doing all the sign-changing and everything, maybe?
I would imagine um, it could start in Public Works, Utilizing Schools, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or uh, Community Development would be another option.
But they're not meeting this month.
I mean, I'm willing to do it, and I'm, I, I think the um, resistance to me doing that meeting was that October thirteenth is our, you're already the, on the spotlight with legislation. So, I think to have a guest, it would just make the meeting too long. So it wouldn't be until November meeting, so that's why we wondered if it might, might be wise to put it in a different me- um, committee.
Why don't we try Public Works, because isn't that, Mr. Crawford, okay with you? Are you aware what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move that item to the Public Works Committee, which I believe is meeting the twenty-eighth, no, twenty?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, okay. So we could discuss that there. Um, and uh, maybe we, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I, there's a letter from the family that they want me to read tonight. Do you want me to read it in pre-council or council?
Um, um, I would think probably council.
Council?
Yeah, because it.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
It's just, it's not that long.
Does it, is it pertaining to the street?
Yes.
Then I would save everything for the committee meeting, and then have everything brought out to council once it's all put together.
Yeah, that might be a better thing, because it might confuse the issue if we have it tonight. We could bring it to the committee meeting, and then when they bring their report, we would bring it then? Or is it a, how is it dressed, Jim?
This is what my, I mean, they dropped this letter off asking that I read it at council, so.
All right, then, you could read it at the end of.
I mean, it's a short letter.
I read it at the end of our, when we have our correspondence, is that okay?
Sure.
All right.
And, and the committee chairs are in agreement about?
Mr. Crawford said that's fine with him.
Okay, thank you, I didn't catch that one.
Public Works, okay. And then maybe by uh, that committee meeting, Mr. Crawford, you might want to request, I, I, I think there would have to be some background information on this process. Um, because I know in the past, Mr. Timmanier, Mr. Franklin, you've been around a, uh, when we sort of dealt with this issue um, a couple of years ago, when we, we did the honoring process, changing, and um, and I know when we were honoring Mr. Paglis, we shied away from a road because in um, well, we wanted to make the, his time with council, his sixty years in this building, we thought would be more representative with the, the room, but um, most of the roads, like Timmanier Lane, um, or uh, who else has a street?
Savarino Drive?
Who, Savarino Drive, these are just like little driveways and streets, so this would be something totally different. I'm not, I'm not saying anything, this is not a editorial comment, this is just a um, procedural. We want to make sure we do our procedure and have our uh, enough information, and so we can move forward.
Mr. President, I do, I do, there is, there is, it's very involved to change a street name, not saying that, obviously, many communities have done it before, and our community has done it before. The roads that have been rededicated in the city, uh, for instance, uh, obviously, I'm a little bit familiar with Timmanier Drive, uh, that was my, obviously, named after my grandfather and his years of service to council. Um, but one of the reasons that was chosen is, from what I understand, it wasn't a road, it was a driveway, and there were no addresses on it, so it was the simplest thing to do. Uh, I'm not certain how that worked with the other ones that, that have been named. Um, but there is a, an involved process, it does also require a thirty-day public uh, notice on that. Um, if you would like, I can reach out to the post office and find out what all needs to change there. There's stuff that would need to change at the county EMA, the County Engineers Office, um, nine-one-one CAD Systems, all that fun stuff. So it is not something you just say, here it is.
That would be good to know going in, and then um, and certainly we want to in, uh, keep Mr. Hayward uh, apprised of, you know, that we're addressing this issue, and maybe um, he might come to a meeting and, and, you know, we can um, talk about some other avenues.
Mr. Hayward and Mr. Sargent.
Yes, and, and I did uh, talk to Mr. Hayward um, before the holiday weekend, and I told him that we were talking about it today, and I'd let him know which committee we'd be looking at it.
Yeah, and so.
President, um, I have a comment since we're talking about it now. Um, I had checked with the hospital as well, to find if there was a way that we could get like a conference room, or um, just this Plan B. I'm not trying to shoot it down, but
Yeah.
I just think with him being a doctor, I think the hospital would be more meaningful and more fitting to his profession, so um, I think we need Plan B if Plan A doesn't work.
Thank you, I, I think that's a good idea too, Lady, and maybe we discuss that with Mr. Hayward and Mr. Sargent. You know, the sc- the scope of the undertaking and our uh, other options, that's a good idea also. I know I was on the school board when we changed uh, Station Avenue to Thurgood Marshall School, and it, it is a process, it's quite a bit involved. And that was just a building on a street, but, all right, so we're set there. Um, Jane, is there, there what, will there be a report tonight? No, right?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're making a resolution tonight.
Okay, so you'll have, you'll have something to uh, report. Kim, Ms. Foglio, is there a report?
Safety forces, yes.
No, on finance and personnel?
Oh, no.
Okay, but safety forces, yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Crawford?
Yes, there'll be a report for Public Works.
Okay. Very good, all right, so when we get to those points, make sure that we do that.
So, while you're on committees, um, Lady and I wanted to trade committees.
Okay.
Is that, would that, I bring that up now?
Um, you want to go to what committee?
Finan- financial and personnel, finance and personnel, and she's gonna take over safety forces. My schedule has changed.
Okay, so you're available Friday morning?
Right.
Okay, and, and Lady, uh, Monday is better than Friday for you?
Monday's fine, I'm off on Monday.
Okay, so.
So I'm available starting in October.
Okay, I think I can make that change, right?
Yes.
I don't think we need to vote on that, so I will uh, appoint, uh, Jane, we could do that at the regular meeting, we'll make a note. Jane to finance and personnel, and Lady to pub- uh, safety forces.
Is that a Monday evening?
Monday morning.
Morning.
I think Monday morning, eight o'clock. Is that still, okay?
Um, I, I'll try to make it work.
All right, good. So we'll, we'll make that change then. All right, Mr. Manager, you seem to have quite a few items, so we should get to you.
Mr. President, I do. Um, so first is an ordinance with LB Water Services um, for materials to complete the Lake Avenue Storm Outfall Project, in the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, sixty-five cents. Uh, this is coming out of our PI fund. There is a storm drain that runs from uh, Lake Avenue by the Iron Bridge that goes through down towards um, uh, Jack's Marina and um, Nelson's Marina down there, uh, Tom Nelson's Marina, so uh, that is somewhat washing out uh, because it's just old galvanized uh, uh, pipe that's down there, so uh, our guys in conjunction with, um, I believe it's Roto-Rooter, uh, and uh, Mr. Nelson himself are going to donate some time to uh, dig that for us, so that we can, we can install the pipe um, and, and fix that, so this is just for the materials of that, of that project. Uh, the next one, obviously, we all know that the paving is done for the year. Uh, we came in under budget to the tune of forty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. Unfortunately, that wasn't enough to do uh, another road. So, that money basically just stays within the paving levy, uh, to be used for next year. So that's a change order deduct, uh, that I'll be asking for tonight. Next is a CRA, a tax abatement for uh, nineteen fifty-six West Prospect Road. This is the Salvatore Chiropractic. Uh, he's re, he is doing an addition there, and he's requesting an abatement for five years at fifty percent. Project is, is expected to create an additional uh, full-time person and two part-time jobs upon completion. We do need to renew our street lighting, uh, special assessment, um, effective tax year twenty-twenty, and continuing for a five-year period at the is uh, as it is, as it is right now, uh, to help pay for a portion of our street lighting. That's just a renewal of, of what we have in effect right now. The next is an ordinance with Control Associates of Chagrin Falls to provide alarm mark, alarm, alarm monitoring services, uh, in the installation. At multiple locations for the wastewater treatment pump stations, uh, in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, this is coming out of the capital improvement for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, basically, we have what are called auto dialers on the pump stations and various equipment at the plant, uh, in the case where we are not on scene when an issue happens at either a pump station or at the plant. The auto dialers we have are still on a two-G network, so those need to be now upgraded to a different cellular service, uh, so they'll be able to call us. The, the two-G is actually ending, I believe it's in October. Um, so we need to put these uh, these stations, we need to upgrade these stations with, with this equipment. And lastly, and I believe um, Mr. Crawford will speak on this when he gives the Public Works Report, we have been in discussion with the Illuminating Company, as with many other cities, um, for a conversion to LED streetlights. Um, what, uh, what First Energy is proposing right now is a conversion to LEDs upon failure of the current lights that we have. So as the bulbs or the fixtures burn out, uh, of the, of the fixtures that we have now, the entire head, the entire cobra head would be replaced to an equivalent LED. Um, there is some cost savings to us, uh, in the very, very long run. It's not something that we're gonna realize right away. There's also opportunities that if we say, let's take a stretch of Lake Avenue, say in front of the hospital, uh, we want to convert all those at once to LED, uh, there is a fee that we would pay to have that done. Uh, it's much smaller than just buying them outright. First Energy will still maintain and fix any of these LEDs going forward. And the reason I say that there is a cost savings, but in the long run, some of the bulbs that we currently have are mercury bulbs. Those, when they're changed out, um, are actually more of a fee, and going to an LED versus mercury right now is actually more to do. And unfortunately, we have a lot of mercury bulbs in the city. As the mercury bulbs right now, without this agreement, as those burn out, they're converted to a high-pressure sodium, which are more expensive than an LED, so we, we will save money because they would be, they, they don't make the mercury bulbs anymore. What council needs to be aware of, and the citizens need to be aware of, as these burn out and as they're replaced, you're gonna kind of see old bulbs with that yellowish glow, and then the brand-new bright LEDs, and then possibly the old bulbs with the yellowish glow, until everything is replaced. I believe they said it's about a five-to-eight-year period before all, three-to-five-year period, I'm sorry. Um, three-to-five-year period before they're all replaced, however, we're seeing mercuries lasting quite a long time, and we have a lot of them out there. But again, this may be a situation also, if we take some of these corridors, uh, we can have a uh, light assessment done to see if we really need, I mean, you look at some stretches in the city, there's a streetlight a- almost on every pole. Um, do we really need that much light? Can we upgrade to a higher um, LED? We can go to the Illuminating Company and say, we would like this many reduced, and then that also takes our bill down as well. Um, so this is basically just a uh, replacement upon failure agreement that we're gonna have with them. Uh, and Mr. President, for now, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Timmanier. Uh, Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would uh, I, I believe it's related, but I would like an executive session to discuss threatened litigation.
Threatened litigation? Mr. Timmanier, what is yours for? We have compensation, threatened litigation, and?
Uh, it would be personnel.
Personnel?
Yes.
We, that's, that's one of the categories. Okay.
Tech, Mr. President, technically, it should be um, hiring, retention, um, layoff, termination, um, one, one of, one of those.
Yeah, discipline, something like that.
For personnel. It would be, it would be hiring for me then.
Hiring? Hiring of personnel. So we'll move for compensation, threatened litigation, and hiring of personnel. Okay. Ms. Sen- uh, Ms. Welch?
Um, Mr. President, with the, I'm not sh- I, I, all I had was the two ordinances, so I guess those will be put on hold?
The two ordinances regarding the payroll?
Yes.
I, I think they, it, I think they will, because we just don't have enough background information.
Right.
It seems quite involved to me. It didn't seem that way, but now, coming here tonight, it seems involved. Are we okay with deadlines and all that kind of stuff?
Um, yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, putting it on hold, you know, obviously, is the smart way to do it, so everybody gets all the information that they need.
Okay, so we'll do that then.
And then the only other thing I, I was gonna say is that we were um, going to get some more money for the COVID relief, so.
We're getting more money?
More money.
Okay. And you'll tell us about that?
Sure.
Okay.
I will.
Good, we'll be, we'll be glad to. We save money on paving, and we're getting more money from COVID, see, what's that? It's a good night to be here, huh? Okay. Um, Ms. Sensky, do you have something for us this evening?
I added in our pre-council the guidelines for honest civic discourse, just something I wanted you guys to look at. I think I've shown it before. Something to, to kick around when we get back into, well, even when we're now, but also getting back into people meetings. Um, I gave you the calendar, and I made my notes to update the agenda items list. If there's anything else, um, that you folks are thinking that we're missing on the agenda items list in your committee, please let me know, and I'll get it on there.
Okay. So I, I do, I do see that the, the committee, Mr. Crawford, is meeting the twenty-eighth, which would be after our next meeting.
Yes.
The twenty-first, so maybe we can still meet at six-thirty? Or do you feel rushed? Do, do the members feel rushed in this fashion? No? Okay, so what, on the twenty-first, we'll, we'll have a six-thirty start again? And then in October, if we need to meet earlier, uh, based on what we're finding from our committees, we could do that also. Is that okay with this side of the dais also? Okay? All right, very good. All right, and then, um, so we have everything? Is anything, any counselor would like to bring before the committee, or before the council, before we start our regular meeting?
I, I have something.
Yes.
So, I, this would be for Public Works. Um, driving around Ward Five, I, I, I had some complaints about garbage not being picked up. And, so I've just been driving around, actually, Wards Three, Four, and Five, and, and what I've noticed is that there is illegal dumping going on, and then there's what I would call stockpiling of garbage. So I don't know, I just want us to further investigate. Are our policies, um, are we leaving trash behind? What's happening to that trash behind? I know with COVID, of course, people have been home, and now everybody is ordering everything online, so you have all this packaging coming in. Um, I think the hours of our sanitation department, the recycling, you know, if you're a working person, or, or you're busy, those are hard hours to get to. So I just, I just want us to kind of look into this. This isn't really a discussion for the dais, but I, I just, I, I want to see, because I don't think it's good to leave a lot of trash behind.
Are you suggesting that at Public Works Committee, or what?
Yeah, I think that's a public. Are you okay with taking that, Calvin?
All right.
I'll come to that committee meeting, and if, I, I know we just threw one thing at, I mean, if it's gotta be not next commi- you know.
And then, on the twenty-eighth, we also have a guest speaker coming in also.
Yeah, so if, if you've got to push it down, but it's just something I wanted, it's an observation I've made, and it, it's something I've gotten complaints about, and I just wonder if it's a policy thing we have to look at, or we just, we just need to look at it, that's all.
And in full disclosure, and I've already shared this with Mr. Timmanier, what, what, one, uh, right after we talked about this, uh, someone in my neighborhood put out a bunch of garbage, I mean, there was just a bunch of garbage. And, and I took a picture of it, because I'm thinking, and I, my neighbor and I talked, or one of the people in my, I said, you know, that, all that garbage isn't gonna go. He goes, I know, I'm just putting it out there to see what happened. And um, so the next day, the, the gentleman came, and they, and they took what they were, you know, uh, they took the container, and they took a couple of extra bags, but a lot of it was still left behind. And uh, when he came home, he knew that, you know, and that he, he took it upon himself to get rid of that also. But I had to apologize to the, the gentleman on the truck, because they saw me taking a picture of it, and I don't know if they thought I was criticizing their work and stuff, which I would never do, because they, I've complimented them from here many times, they do a good job. But I was just trying to show, you know, it was just way too much, and so this issue needs to be addressed, but also, you know, we have to um, still have some parameters, I think that. So it's a, it's a difficult issue. It may not seem that way, but it is, you know?
Right.
So, all right. Anything else from anybody? Okay. All right, so when we have our meeting, we will start with, uh, we do have a presentation. I know we haven't had visitors, but we will have one this evening. Um, we're pretty, um, I always want to say we're pretty spaced out, but having grown up in the seventies, sixties, that's probably not a good term.
Mr. Roskovic, that being said, I'm gonna go out and check the door.
Okay, yes, you're good. We're, we're not spaced out, we're I don't even want to say, I guess we're not scattered either, but we have enough room for a visitor tonight, okay? And um, and then we will have, Ms. Hill is with us tonight to talk, uh, for our monthly COVID update, and uh, she would tell us about the drive-through uh, event. So, okay? So we have about four or five minutes. Are you turning us off? Thank you.
You'll still be streaming.
Oh, we're still streaming? Oh, okay.
Actually, if you, if you hit the sound off.
And our recorder is on.
There we go.
At this time, we would like to stand for the pledge and the prayer. Ms. Foglio?
Heavenly Father, we ask you to let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today. And your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen.
Vague allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sensky, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Haynes?
Here.
Mrs. Foglio?
Here.
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Spielman? Mr. Roskovich?
Here.
Mr. Timmonier?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
The chair will entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Spielman.
Second.
Or I'm gonna entertain, oh, does somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Foglio, thank you. Ms. Foglio moves in Ms. Haynes' seconds to excuse Mr. Spielman. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Spielman will be excused by a six to zero vote. We have enough members to establish a quorum this evening and we are meeting the requirements of the sunshine law. At this time, we do have a visitor, um, Ms. Wisdom Davis is going to be presented with a resolution of appreciation, um, by Ms. Sensky.
Or know who everybody is, that all their names are on front, so it'll be easier. Octavia Harris, she's Ward 4 Counselor, Ward 3 Counselor, Ladyne Young, Ward 2 Counselor, Calvin Crawford, Kim Foglio, Ward 1 Counselor, our Vice President's not here today, but, um, John Roskovich is our Council President. Jane Haynes is the Ward 5 Counselor, and it was her idea to present you with this resolution today. Tracy Welch, our Director of Finance, Jim James Timmonier, City Manager, and Michael Franklin, City Solicitor. And I'm just gonna read this to you, okay? Resolution number 2020-63, a resolution of appreciation to Wisdom Davis. Whereas it has become the attention in the City Council and these public officials of the city of Ashtria Bula, Ohio, that special recognition is in order. And whereas Wisdom Davis, daughter of Tara Jean Tackett, sister of Rhythm Davis, graduate of Edgewood High School and ATech, and current student of Lakeland Community College and longtime city of Ashtria Bula resident, recognized the need to raise awareness of systematic racism and police brutality in our society and fervently desire to take action. And whereas Wisdom organized peaceful gathering, "We Can't Breathe," Saturday, June 6th, 2020, at Kevin Cornelius Memorial Park in the city of Ashtria Bula to mourn all the lives lost to police brutality. And whereas Wisdom coordinated with local public officials, law enforcement officers, and clergy, and whereas Wisdom invited concerned citizens hoping to add their voices to the nationwide call for change to share their experiences, to discuss ways to uplift others, and to encourage peace. And whereas Wisdom created a guestbook that included messages and signatures from event attendees, which she sent to the family of George Floyd. And whereas Wisdom asked attendees to kneel or lay on the ground silently for nine minutes, followed by a candlelight vigil. Now therefore be it resolved that this City Council and these public officials of the city of Ashtria Bula, Ohio do hereby express our sincere gratitude and appreciation to you, Wisdom Davis, for your distinguished contribution and touching tribute. Your genuine spirit and community values earn you a place in the history of the city of Ashtria Bula. We support your efforts and eagerly anticipate the changes to come. We are listening. Thank you for believing in Ashtria Bula.
Thank you guys so much. A few words. I just wanna thank everybody who supported and came together on June 6th. We had a lot of support from the community and it was a really good day. And I just wanna thank you guys for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Sensky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You just have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Sensky. Thank you, Ms. Sensky. At this time, we'll have Ms. Christine Hill from our City Health Department with our weekly, uh, COVID, monthly COVID, uh, update. As we practice our COVID procedures. Thank you, Mr. Timmonier, Ms. Sensky.
Thank you, thanks for doing that, that's very nice. I was ready, I brought my Clorox wipes with me, cause I kind of anticipated that I might have to share this podium with others. So it's good to see you all, hope you had a a nice holiday and a little time to relax and be with your family. So I'm before you here giving you an update on COVID. Um, I'll start with Ashtria Bula city totals. Um, to date, we have 118 positive cases, that's cumulative count. Hospitalized cumulative count for our city is 20. Sadly, the cumulative death count remains at five. Quarantine orders, cumulatively, we have issued 394 orders of quarantine. The county itself, positive cases, 636. Hospitalized cumulative total, 106. Death cumulative total, 46. Analyzing the data that we have in the county, I can tell you that congregate living cases is accounting for 43.9% of our cases. And community spread is attributed to 56.1%. So the scales are starting to tip more toward community spread, less toward congregate living. You know, some of the recent things that have been happening with COVID, I think your President, uh, Roskovich mentioned it, we did have a COVID-19 pop-up testing event. We held that on Monday, August 31st, at Our Lady at Peace Parish. We had lots of partners that helped us, we did host it. But we had lots of partners help us put that on. The NAACP was a partner with us, State Road Medical Facility was a partner, Our Lady at Peace Parish, the American Red Cross, the County Health Department, and Connyatt City Health Department sent some staff to help. Community care ambulance sent a crew to stand by as EMS. City Manager's Office was wonderfully helpful, um, the Police Department, our Public Works Department. On the state level, the Ohio National Guard actually did the testing for us, the Ohio Department of Health, Ohio Governor's Mike, Mike DeWine's office, and the Minority Health Strike Force, and then many community volunteers. So the event itself was, um, was set up, uh, in the parking lot. We did a lot of pre-planning. Everything went very smoothly, we had a very nice day to have the event. We did test 136 people. And, um, we did, I did do a summary report. I won't read off all the places that the people came from, but I will tell you that 53 of those folks were Ashtria Bula city residents. We had a nice slice of, um, Ashtria Bula County come through. It was just a, just a nice slice of people from all over the county. We did have 125, um, county residents in total that were tested. We did have 11 residents from other counties in Ohio come through and get tested. The positivity rate, when we got the testing results back, uh, overall, we had seven positive cases out of 136 tested. That's a 5.2% positivity rate. Ashtria Bula County rate, push, pulling it out by itself, we had six positive Ashtria Bula County residents out of 125 tested, and that's a 4.8% positivity rate. So that was all very interesting. We wished, we were prepared to do up to 500 tests. So we had to be ready to do that. That would have been a, that would have been a pretty tall order, but we were ready to do that. And, um, even though this was labor-intensive, I think it was well worth every minute spent on it. We are used to setting up drive-through flu clinics and smaller clinics here in our own parking lot, but never have I coordinated something, um, on that level with state partners and, you know, that type of thing, and preparing to do that many people. So, you know, we we almost looked at it as a real-life drill. And we did a, um, what we call an after-action review, where we talked about what went, what went well, what didn't go well, what could have gone better. You know, just all of those things to put, you know, in our toolkit for the next time, if there's a next time that we have to do an event like this. And, um, you know, knowing the nature of COVID and some of these infectious diseases, that outdoor setting, you know, really does lend itself well to, um, you know, that kind of clinic, so. I'd be happy to take any questions anybody has about the pop-up testing. I do have other things I wanna tell you, but I thought I'd just stop there in case somebody did have a question about that event.
Mr. President? Just one question. I I found the the positivity rate information very interesting. When people are tested, for example, at ACMC and they test negative, is that information given to you as part of your, for statistical analysis as well?
No, they don't typically tell us about the negative rates. We do hear the positivity rate overall. We, we will get a negative, uh, report sent to us, um, if we're, we're, we're keeping an eye on a particular patient. You know, we have a patient that had an exposure, we have a patient that we're worried about and that we know has been tested. But we don't, we don't know how many people out there are being tested because they're coming from a variety, they're funneling from a lot of different sources, so. The hospitals themselves and the testing facilities do do reporting, just not to us. They do it, they do it to, on a state level, but not to us. So we don't, we don't often know that, but they do, we do, um, weekly have a, a county report. And, um, the hospitals sit on, or are part of that conference call, and they do report their, their tests that they've done for the week, their positivity rate for the week, and then their overall positivity rates of their testing, so. Did that answer? Okay. You're welcome.
Mr. President, uh, Ms. Hill, and I think, I think I know this, but the positivity rate that we did see in Ashtria Bula County is very similar to what the state is seeing overall, correct?
Yes, 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 that's right. Yeah, that was, so that, you know, I I'm glad, because, you know, you don't want any surprises, especially in the wrong direction. You don't wanna see an 11% positivity rate or 15% or something like that. That would be, you know, not what we wanted to see, so. Okay, now I'm gonna move on, there's some other things that are happening. Um, just recently, there was an order signed, um, by the Director of the Ohio Department of Health. This order has to do with school reporting of COVID cases. So as you know, um, most of our schools in the county have started in some way, shape, or form. Most all of them have some version of lives, you know, students live at the school. Ashtria Bula City Schools is completely virtual, except for some students that are going to school for special treatments and things they have to have done at school. So, um, the new order was signed on September 3rd. It is requiring parents, as of today, to report, um, confirmed positive children that are students to the school within 24 hours. The school then has an obligation to notify all the parents of that school, of the positive cases, and that's just students, teachers, staffs, staffer-coach within 24 hours. And they also have to notify, um, the Health Department of the positive cases within 24 hours. On top of that, um, effective next week, we are going to start doing a weekly report about schools and what's happening at school. So we're currently working with our schools to talk about how that reporting's going to, to look. They are gonna report, um, students and staff that are newly positive. And then we're gonna keep a cumulative running total of student and staff that are positive in those districts. So it it's very similar to what we've been doing with nursing homes. If you go on the coronavirus.ohio.gov, you can look at a running total of nursing homes and their, you know, their positive, or their positive cases, staff and residents, and it would be very, very similar for the school districts. So, um, you know, we are working with them. The Ohio Department of Health has put out some draft letters for them to use to notify the parents in the districts, to notify the parents of a classroom, to, um, you know, send a letter home even with a student. So they've given them some draft letters to work with. So, you know, stay tuned, we're working with our schools on that process. We have a, a Zoom meeting with the superintendents next week, so. The other, uh, order that recently was signed on August 31st, last Monday, was concerning adult daycare and senior centers. So they're giving them permission to reopen, if they so choose, on September 30th, or September 21st. We, um, have had several conversations with the Ashtria Bula Senior Center, and they are exploring reopening. The order itself is very thick, it's very comprehensive, because we are dealing with a very vulnerable population. And, you know, some of these senior centers do everything from soup to nuts with their seniors. So that, you know, the order's very thick, cause they, they feed them and they, they, you know, they plan excursions with them, and they do crafts with them, and they exercise, and so there's just all of these things at a center. So, you know, the orders, the order is, um, a lot to take in, and I think our senior center is just trying to comprehend and make a plan. I think they plan to start, if they plan to start, uh, I don't know for sure when they will start, but when they start, I think they're going to start slowly. And they're gonna submit a COVID plan to us, and we'll, we'll work with them to get that open and and ready to go. Because I know, on the other hand, this is a vulnerable population that we worry about, but studies have shown that this isolation has really affected their mental health. They feel very isolated and very alone, and that's not good. So we have to balance, just like we have to balance our economy with safety, we have to balance, you know, the seniors and their safety and their mental health. Our nursing homes continue to test staff bi-weekly. That's a, that's a major, major event, you know, testing all those people. And then every week, we wait, uh, and see if any of the staff become positive. So that, that, um, is a, um, a thing that has been happening and continues to happen. and continues to happen. Staff, residents in nursing homes, they're tested strategically. They're tested if they need to be tested, if they're symptomatic, or if they've had an exposure, or they're, anybody's concerned. But mass testing of residents is not happening. The thinking is that it's the staff that comes and goes. It would be the staff that would most likely introduce that virus into the facility. So, that's why the focus is on the staff. The other thing that's new happening is our wastewater treatment plant is participating in a wastewater monitoring study. I think this is exciting. It's interesting. They're monitoring virus RNA fragments in their wastewater. Just gonna, they're going to take a look at the trends for that and see if this could be maybe an early warning sign for disease. You can see Ashdabula's results on coronavirus.ohio.gov, and that's something Craig Pierce took on, and I think that's a very interesting study. It could, it could be helpful to us to know, you know, when, when we might be seeing more disease by monitoring the wastewater, so. And, you know, it is important to say that, you know, wastewater is, is treated at the wastewater prillant every day for all viruses and bacteria. So, there's no danger to the, to the population. That's, that's the normal course of the event. And if we can get some information about this virus through the study, that would be great. And lastly, I did want to talk to you about seasonal flu clinics. So, this year, we're going to conduct our seasonal flu clinics through, drive-through flu clinics here in our own parking lot. We are going to have a day and a time that we'll have a standing day and time when we will have that. And then we'll probably have some pop-up flu clinics that will happen, just depending on how our week is going and when we can get a couple of staff member to go out and, and do a pop-up. But we will utilize our parking lot here and our emergency response trailer. We're having some banners made so that when the public drives by and they see flu clinic today, they'll realize we're out there giving flu shots. As the weather turns and we can no longer do that, we will then turn to doing flu shots by appointment. The COVID-19 vaccination, this is still, you know, in the future. This is still unknown. We wait for details on this. We, we don't know much about it. I will tell you a bit of good news. The EMTs had their scope of practice expanded, that they can help with vaccination. I did have a conversation with Mr. Timmonier and with the chief about using their EMTs in a vaccination clinic for coronavirus, you know, as, as extra staff. And that does sound like a thing that we could maybe work out to have some extra hands on deck. So, I'm, I'm excited about that potential, that we could have some more, more help in a clinic for COVID-19 vaccination. Because everybody's getting kind of tired. We'll get through flu season, and then they'll bring out the COVID, and we'll, we'll have to do that one too, so. And that's pretty much the end of my report. I'm happy to take any questions or...
I have a couple of things. I, I know you said you're going to be meeting with school superintendents.
Yes.
And, and I, I spent part of my career as a school counselor, and I, I would hope, I know a lot of the school counseling positions have been cut, but I would hope that that might be some, something that, that they're addressing, that maybe the state is putting out some guidelines for school counselors to use when they talk to kids because this is a big anxiety.
Absolutely.
Causing thing. And, and I think the school counselors know, you know, you're prepared to handle, you know, this and that. This is certainly a new, a new beast that hopefully they're getting some information on.
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know, when you're meeting with them, if, if you could ask about that. I'd just be curious, so.
Yeah, I can, and I think that's a really good point. I know we, you know, of course, we have a, a, a relationship and an ongoing relationship with our, with our school nurses.
Yeah.
And that would be an example. You know, their specialty is, you know, school nursing. Well, what do you do when school is not in session? The, the children aren't there. Believe me, they have a lot to do from home, things they can do. And I'm sure the counselors are the same, that they, they have things that they can do, checklists and things they can do, and even additional duties related to COVID and, you know, the mental health part of that, so.
Even telecoun, or telecounseling, or I'm sure they're working on all that. I was just thinking about...
Yeah, if, if I have a, a chance, I will ask. Yeah, because that is an interesting topic.
Not that you don't have enough to do.
It's all right. It's all right.
But I, I did see, unfortunately, a tourist spot in our county made the news. Did you happen to see that one?
I did.
On the news, yeah?
Yes, and I'm awfully glad that I don't have Geneva on the Lake in our jurisdiction. I, boy, that's a, that's like herding cats down there. That's tough, you know, and I think...
It was on the news.
Yeah, Ray Zapparito made a comment about just, you know, how difficult it is, you know, and it, it is a tough place. And people just long to have normalness and, you know, they, they just, I think they just drop their guard and forget. And it is open air, and I think that that gives them a level of comfort. And they think, well, we, you know, we, we cannot have to wear our masks and things like that, so. But I do know that the Ohio Investigative Unit, which is that, the unit that, that deals with, you know, alcohol, is, is out in enforcement. And that is one thing that the governor's office can do to help local health departments with enforcement. And, you know, they, they have been working with them. And, and, and not everybody down there is not following the rules. I just want to say that too. But, yeah, that, I did see that on the news. That's, that's tough. Yeah, there's some tough decisions that have to be made about fall festivals and, just like they were about spring and summer festivals, you know. So, we're waiting to hear some guidance about, you know, school homecoming dances and, you know, just is there a safe way for us to, to allow something like that to happen? And, you know, it's just hard. You know, those are our traditions and, and things that we look forward to and our kids, it's a rite of passage for them. And yet, we don't want them to be in danger, so.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
As soon as I get information about trick-or-treat, and, you know, I don't know if you all have had those discussions. I know Jim and I have a little bit, you know. I'll let you know any guidance I get, any, you know, any ideas anybody has about, you know, safely conducting that or if that's just something we won't be able to do. So, I'll, I'll let you know.
I did get an email from Channel 5. Did you get that, Mr. Timmonier? I got an email from Channel 5 wondering if we were having trick-or-treat.
Yeah. It's kind of a hot topic, so.
Yeah, I'm just surprised.
It figures this year it would be on a Saturday, so. I said it figures this year it would fall on a Saturday.
That'd be our luck, right? And it'll probably be a really nice evening, not a rainy evening, so. All right, thanks again for your kind attention. Thanks.
At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to, for an executive session to discuss compensation of personnel, threatened litigation, and hiring of personnel.
Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Mrs. Foglio.
Second.
Second by Ms. Haynes. We will call the roll on that. And this will be at the conclusion of our meeting tonight, and we do not anticipate any action afterwards. Will you call the roll for that?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
What? Is it yes? Okay, sorry. Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman? Mr. Roskovich?
Yes. We, so at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, we will have an executive session by a 6 to 0 vote. Do we have minutes for this evening, Ms. Sensky?
Yes. August 17th, 2020, public hearing. The President called the public hearing to order at 5:30 PM. The members present were Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Ms. Young, Ms. Haynes, Mr. Spielman, and Mr. Roskovich. The officers present were Mr. Timmonier, Mr. Franklin, and Mrs. Sensky. Mr. Estock, the petitioner of the zoning district change, was also in attendance. August 17th, 2020, regular council meeting. The President called the meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. The Ward 1 counselor offered the opening prayer, and the pledge of allegiance was recited. The members present were Ms. Young, Ms. Haynes, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Spielman, and Mr. Roskovich. The officers present were Mr. Franklin, Mr. Timmonier, Ms. Welch, and Mrs. Sensky. Mr. Crawford moved, and Ms. Young seconded to excuse the Ward 4 counselor from the meeting. Motion carried.
May I have a motion? We waived the reading of the minutes?
So moved.
That was, okay, thank you. It's hard with the mask, I'm sorry.
I know.
A motion by Mrs. Foglio and a second by Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion, comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes will stand by a 6 to 0 vote. Mr. Manager, do you have a report for us this evening?
Mr. President, I do, thank you. First, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with LB Water Services of Stonenborough, Pennsylvania, for the purchase, for the purpose of providing materials to complete the Lake Avenue Storm Outfall Project in the amount not to exceed $18,352.65. Funding for this purchase will be taken from Fund 412.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Harris or Ms. Young?
Ms.
Thank you, I'm sorry. A motion by Ms. Foglio, a second by Ms. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that to our agenda by a 6 to 0 vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to execute change order number one with Koski Construction, mailing address here in Ashdabula, Ohio, for the purpose of non-performance of services and materials in the amount of $47,192.29. Just for clarification on this, this is the amount that we came under budget on the project, the paving project. What that usually encompasses is we put money into the contracts and into our estimates for subsurface repairs. We didn't have as many of those as we first initial predicted. And for catch basin and sewer grate areas for repairs to those, we didn't have as many as anticipated. Therefore, those numbers are credited back to the city. This money will stay in our paving levy account and just be used going forward.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Ms. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will add that item by a 6 to 0 vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to approve a CRA, Community Reinvestment Area Application, for the address known as 1956 West Prospect Road. The abatement would be for five years at 50%. The project is expected to create one full-time and two part-time jobs upon completion. This is for DeSalvatore Chiropractic. They're adding in addition to their practice.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, a second by Ms. Haynes. Are they adding, are they adding on to the back of the building?
They're adding on, I believe, in both directions, to the, to the side. I can't remember which, Duquesne there. So, they're adding to that side and on the back.
On the back, okay. The chiropractic is adding on to the back, so that's... All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a 6 to 0 vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to renew effective tax year 2020 and continuing for a period of five years an existing special assessment upon all real property in the city of Ashdabula, Ohio in order to pay a portion of the cost of providing street lighting.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, a second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a 6 to 0 vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Control Associates of Chagrin Falls, Ohio, for the purpose of providing alarm, alarm monitoring system installation and monitoring for multi-locations for our wastewater treatment pump stations in the amount not to exceed $13,343. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund 504.
Mr. President, I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Ms. Foglio moves. Jane Haynes, Ms. Haynes, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a 6 to 0 vote.
And lastly, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with First Energy, the illuminating company, for the purpose of providing street lighting replacement, bulbs or lights with LED on an as-needed basis.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Ms. Foglio moves. Mr. Crawford, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a 6 to 0 vote.
Lastly, just a reminder, because of the Labor Day holiday, garbage is delayed one day. So, if you're typically a Monday, that was today. Those of you who get picked up on Friday will be on Saturday. And this week's recycling, which I believe is Ward 1, will also be picked up on Saturday. Mr. President, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Timmonier. Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. President. All I had was the request for the executive session.
Ms. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to give some additional, well, some good news. We got, we're getting a, a second round of the CARES Act money. The, that amount is $392,258.77, which will allow us to pay some additional money from the fire department because it, the, the last round only covered the salaries portion. So, now we could, you know, add the pension and other things. And then also, the health department also received some grant money for the COVID relief, and theirs was approximately $88,000. So, I have to play the, the shift game because we had originally put them all in the COVID relief money. So, now we're gonna shift things back and forth. So, it's, we're gonna play the musical shells game again. So, that's all I have.
Well, good, that's good news. So, we appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Sensky?
Yes, I had an interesting week of surveys from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, so clerks all over the nation that are in this committee. It's the Mentoring and Membership Committee. And one of them asked about their meeting methods now and what they're looking at now. And I was just astounded that all over the nation, they are still doing Zoom webinars of the people that responded, okay? This, this was just out of that committee. Even in Bleeden Parish, United Kingdom, I had, there's a clerk that I'm on the committee with, and he says that they are still doing Zoom meetings over in the United Kingdom. Just wanted to give you that tidbit because that was interesting.
Yeah. I know I'm on another board, and we're doing Zoom meetings all the way till the end of the year at this point. So, yeah.
That being said, there, this room, I think the max capacity is a hundred, it says on the wall. I, I just want something to think about for you council members is, you know, are we, are we gonna start allowing people in? Are we going to stop or continue to broadcast the way we've been broadcasting? If we allow people in, are we going to give a certain percentage of what our occupancy is and still keep the meetings in here? And how that would look? I started to set up the chairs to see a little bit of how that would look, at least on that So I just thought it'd be something that you guys should probably think about going forward because I think, I'm sure people are gonna wanna, and you're gonna wanna have people come in too, I think. Or not. It's up to you. I just wanted to give you the information.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Sensky. Ms. Haynes, you have a community development and economic development report?
I, so the only action we did was the Wisdom Davis Resolution. And then our next meeting will be. And there's a formal request for a resolution of appreciation to youth opportunities and the Lakeside Football Dragons team.
So you're, you're making a formal request for a resolution?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If anybody wanted to look it over, I, I had emailed it, but it's on page twenty-nine of your legislative packet.
So Ms. Haynes has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any discussion?
So it, it's come to my attention, it's, it's just that beyond the youth opportunities, that there's some other people that need acknowledged, and I don't know if we should just acknowledge them separately, or it, this, there's been a lot of people that have volunteered time and money into making the parks cleaned up, into making Main Avenue cleaned up. And I certainly don't want to slight anyone. So I think that, you know, we're just gonna keep that, this one as is, and then going forward, maybe acknowledge more people. That's all.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item by a six to zero vote. And I, I know what you're, Ms. Haynes, and I'm thinking maybe too, if we don't go the resolution route, we could always write a letter from council, you know, of appreciation and, because I'm thinking, I've been thinking a lot of like the, the CAT Committee, you know, the women who, and the gentlemen who have taken on that process, they have, what an amazing job they've done. They've been at it a whole year. It's been a whole year already. And they've been busy, and they've done so many things. But I'm thinking, who would you give a resolution to? Because there's so many different people. So maybe, you know, sometimes we could address these, write a nice letter, and council can sign it, or you as a counselor, or something along those lines. You have something to think about.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I spoke with Doc Fiala, and she is probably going to want to give a report in November.
Okay.
She's got a lot of statistics that she's been keeping track of with the CATs, and she wants to share that with the council.
Yeah. I, I think that'll be fine. You know, one member coming would be fine. You know, I, I, I guess, I can't imagine when they took that, when they took that chore over that, I mean, that they would just do so much, and that was great. All right, Ms. Foglio, you have a finance report?
No. The next meeting will be Friday, September eighteenth at eight AM unless we decide not.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, there is a public works report.
Yes, sir. On August twenty-fourth, we had our Public Works and Utility Cable and Schools meeting. At the meeting, we actually had a guest from First Energy, Wendy Zeeley, and she talked about a program to replace the streetlights with LEDs, which is one of the things the city manager brought up for tonight. The suppliers are no longer making the current mercury lights, so it's sort of driving us to that route to go with LED because of the cost savings and the betterment for the environment. First Energy will either replace the light fixtures as they go out, or the city does have the option to choose to designate a corridor and to replace the fixtures. Like Mr. Timmaner said, if we decide, like Main Avenue, if we wanted all those so that you get that continuity of a street so that people don't see the air, the orange color, we could make it look actually better for areas as we start. Those were actually at a two hundred and forty-two dollars per light fixture is what it would cost if we designated a corridor what we would want. Current lifespan, she said, on light bulbs are actually three to five years. So at the route we're going, it will take three to five years for basically, hopefully all the lights in the city would be switched over to LEDs. At that time, that would be at current rate, it would be about a twenty-six thousand dollars a year savings, once all of the bulbs in the city have been, the fixtures have been changed over to LED. So that would come off of the city's electric bill for the city lights. There would be more savings, as Mr. Manager, City Manager said, was if we did a light study to reduce the amount because of how bright the LED lights are. We may not need as many in the city. And currently, the city has over two hundred and twenty, two thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight light fixtures in the city. So it's a big pill to swallow when there's that many lights lighting up to keep the neighborhoods and everything safe. And our current electric bill's just over three hundred thousand a year just for the lights for the city. So if a resident sees a light out, we're still paying for it even if the light is out. So it'd be good if they see it, report it, because we're still paying for it even if it was, it's turned off, it's out. So with this program, if the light's out, they're gonna replace it to LEDs right then. So that's a good thing. So that was from our guest speaker. On the wastewater pollution, as Ms. Hill said, there is a partnership from the Ohio EPA, the Ohio State University, and the Ohio Department, or Health Department, that is a statewide study to test for COVID virus RNA fragments in wastewater. And it will allow a seven to ten-day notice of numbers in the area before you actually could possibly have cases noticed. Correct, Mr. Manager?
That's correct.
All right. That is no cost to the city. That is all being paid by grants, so that's just a program that we want to do to help get numbers and generate numbers to help people out. From Public Works, there's been a strain on the perks to help because we weren't able to hire any summer helps this summer. So Public Works runs thin, so they're trying to get to those. The department's been out patching potholes. The city actually cleaned up, when we talked earlier about people and the trash and that, they collected six and a half tons of trash from the Ohio Avenue Extension. So that street's not very long, but the city cleaned up six and a half tons to try to make that neighborhood a little bit cleaner and nicer. The leaf and lawn bag drop-off has got a little better, but there is still some people putting trash out there, so they're, but it is coming down, which is a good thing. And just want to emphasize that that service is for the residents of the city. It's not for businesses to drop off. That's a service to help the residents of the city, not businesses. Public Works has also been out with the sewer vac and jetting lines that are trouble areas that they have, so they're just being preemptive on trying to take care of those. And in a closing, the city has completed the paving from, of the streets from the road levy, and the balance of the money that was left will go into next year, and then that'll help start us off because we didn't want to spend money we didn't have. We want to make sure we have the money so we don't get caught. So we want to make sure we have the money so we know what we could spend each year. So that's what we had from the Public Works meeting. And our next meeting is Monday, September twenty-eighth at five PM, and our guest speaker will be Dr. Mark Potts, the Superintendent of the Ashtrubula City Schools.
There we go. Thank you.
Mr. President, just a note, if people want to see what these LEDs are going to look like, Collins Boulevard from the Spring Street Bridge around to Main Avenue, we had all of those lights turned, changed because we actually own that strip of lights. It's one of the very few areas, we're one of the very few municipalities that actually own some of our poles and lights. That is one of the very few areas that we do own. We had those switched out to LED because we had some underground wiring issues. That was all put in during urban renewal. It was non-reparable, so we had to go overhead. And at that time, I decided to change the lights out too. So if people want to see what that is going to look like when all of our lights are eventually done, they can check that out on Collins Boulevard. And those are the GE fixtures that Illuminating Company will be going to.
Thank you. I, I do have a question about the, I know, I mentioned before about the, I, I know we're behind on the grass cutting, and I, I mentioned the hill behind the library. I, I was wondering, the hill at Point Park, is that supposed to be, was, is that traditionally mowed, or is that supposed to be bushes and?
Well, it, we've, every so often, we try to cut it down as far as possible, but that actually, I believe one time, the fire department did it by repelling down the hill. It's not something, we can get close to the stairway and do things. We can't get all, I mean, that, that hill is just way too steep. So it's coming, about time that we need to do it again. Plus, a portion of that is actually owned by the railroad, so it's a little battle between them and us. We have started a little bit on the hill down at Walnut Beach. We've brought the sidearm in, as far as we can get it there, most of the rest of that is gonna have to be walked and with a weed whacker, so.
I was, I was just wondering if they notice it. Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to, to mention, because I've recently been immersed in historic district issues, there may be some concerns from some components or some business owners in the Harbor Historic District about switching to these bright white, modern LED lights. In a lot of historic districts around the country, you see yellower lights mimicking sort of gas light and fire light and things like that. So I would just anticipate that your committee may have to take up that issue at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. That's a, that's a good heads up. Ms. Foglio, you have a Safety Forces report?
Yes, I do. The Safety Forces Committee met on Monday, August twenty-fourth at eight AM. We had a guest speaker, Beth Brown, who is the Outreach Manager for Brightview Treatment Center here in Ashtrubula Township at twenty-two-ten South Ridge East. Brightview is an outpatient addiction medical practice which uses medical treatment for psychological and social services. They support each patient to achieve their own goals. They offer groups for expectant mothers and families of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, and asexual, aromantic LGBTQIA persons. They have a twenty-four-seven access line, and they treat addiction as a disease. Patients can be seen the same day by a physician, and they will take all forms of insurance and will also assist patients who have no insurance. They offer transportation and childcare for day one and day two of treatment. Case managers help patients with transportation, education, employment, housing, nutrition, domestic violence, social networking, sober support, inpatient and residential legal concerns, and medical treatment. They partner with other Ashtrubula County facilities, offering residential treatment also. Brightview goals for the patients are to relieve their symptoms, manage their disease, and allow them to live a normal lifestyle. They are open from eight to five. Walk-ins are welcome until three PM. Ms. Brown did state that due to the coronavirus, they have seen an uptick in overdoses and alcohol abuse. The phone number to reach Brightview is one eight-three-three-five-one-zero-help, and welcome to our community. The police chief gave us a copy of the annual report, which was very nicely done. Calls for services were up, but still within normal range. The department answered between fourteen thousand and sixteen thousand calls in two thousand and nineteen. The chief also has appointed a community liaison to help seek better community relations. Anyone can view the Police Department annual report on the city's website. The fire chief reported that he is happy to have all his staff back at the station. The fire department is now able to relieve community care in neighboring townships with ambulance calls. Parking was discussed on West Sixteenth Street, traffic visualization at West Forty-sixth and Main, racing motorcycles in the city, and problems at Point Park. The next meeting will be held on September twenty-eighth at eight AM.
Thank you, Ms. Foglio. Any questions or comments? We will move on to the business part of our agenda this evening. Ms. Sensky, we haven't received any, any public communications on any of these items?
No, we have not.
All right, thank you. So we will have item twenty-seventy-five, renewing the street lighting assessment. Twenty-seventy-six, rehabilitating the centrifuge scroll. Twenty-seventy-seven, the reinvestment area tax agreement with Paul Shell Properties. Items twenty-seventy-eight and twenty-seventy-nine, we will, in a minute, we will entertain a motion to table those. Or could we just pull them from the agenda, Mr. Franklin, or do we need to table them? Could you tell us?
I, I don't think these two items have ever been approved for your agenda.
So we could?
So I don't think there's anything that needs to be done.
Yeah, we didn't do that tonight. So we'll, we'll be all right, just ignore, okay. So we will, we will not have twenty-seventy-eight, twenty-seventy-nine. Thank you. We will add twenty-eighty, which is the resolution of support for youth opportunities in the Lakeside Dragon Football Team. Twenty-eighty-one, tax agreement for the David Land Company. And twenty-eighty-two, the new monitoring system at the wastewater treatment plant. Anything else, Ms. Sensky?
That is all the legislation for tonight.
All right. So remember, we are leaving out seventy-eight, seventy-nine. So do I have a motion to handle tonight's activities in consent agenda?
Mr. President, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, second by Ms. Haynes. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will handle these items in consent agenda format by a six to zero vote. Ms. Sensky, would you like to read the items for us?
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-seventy-five, an ordinance renewing effective tax year 2020 and continuing for a period of five years, an existing special assessment upon all real property in the city of Ashtrubula, Ohio, in order to pay a portion of the cost of providing street lighting. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-seven-six, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Andritz Separation Incorporated in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand and eighty-three dollars for the purpose of rehabilitating the centrifuge scroll at the city's wastewater treatment plant. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-seven-seven, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with Paul Shell Properties LLC for tax abatement at fifty percent for ten years for the partial demolition, reconstruction, and/or remodeling of structures at four-one-three-five State Road. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-seven-eight, an ordn, no, sorry. Resolution number twenty-twenty-eighty, a resolution of appreciation to youth opportunities and Lakeside Dragons Football Team. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-eighty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with the David Land Company Limited Liability Company for tax abatement at fifty percent for five years for the construction of, an addition to a commercial structure at nineteen fifty-six West Prospect or US Route Twenty. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-eighty-two, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Control Associates Incorporated in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars to install a new monitoring system for various operations at the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. May we have a motion to waive the reading of the legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Ms. Foglio moves?
Second.
Ms. Harris, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a second, a six to zero vote. We have a motion to waive the charter requirements of two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford, to waive the charter requirements of two readings. Would you call the roll on that, Ms. Sensky?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Mr. Roskovich.
Yes. And on passage?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Mr. Roskovich.
Yes. And those items, agenda items, have passed by a six to zero vote. Is there anything else? Ms. Sensky?
New business. Who's next?
Okay, nothing else to vote on. Okay. Any new business for the council?
I have that letter I wanted to read.
Okay. We could do that in, after, let's have, tell us something we don't know first.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything council would like to, tell us something we don't know this evening?
I have something for that, too.
Okay, good. Thank you. And Ms. Foglio, you do too? All right, go ahead.
So September nineteenth, hazardous items can be delivered to Ashtrubula County Joint Vocational School, ATAC, from nine to one. And that's gonna be posted on our Facebook page, right, Jim?
Mr. President? Yes, it will be on our Facebook page. I believe I have it scheduled for Thursday prior to.
And this is a good thing because we don't want hazardous waste in our garbage. Even getting rid of a can of paint. They told me one time to get kitty litter and this or that. What an ordeal. I ended up with paint in my car and my, so this is nice to bring it, bring it to the Vow Ed School, and a good deal, so.
Mr. President, just a, when you, when you speak about paint, so, believe it or not, you can throw, it's a good idea to bring it to this event and just dump it out and have them dispose of it that way. If you're unable to do that, and you do have cans of paint around, the, the trick with this is, I know that there are products out there that you mix into the paint, and it hardens it and all that. Really, all you need to do is leave the litter. Uh, really, all you need to do is leave the lid off of it and allow it to dry completely all the way through. So you might have to poke it, make sure it's all the way through, dry. Once it is completely dry and not in any type of liquid state at all, you can just throw it away.
Ms. Foglio, you have something to share?
I received an email from Patty Stone, who's the District Manager for Junior Achievement. Um, there is a fun, all-ages event with proceeds benefiting, benefiting Junior Achievement of Ashbula County, Sunday, September twentieth, from two to four. Uh, they are going to have teams which will travel to stops around the county. Uh, they'll, uh, submit photos, videos, uh, earn points, and there's some cash prizes. And this will take place after the raffle that they're having, um, which you can find more information on Junior Achievement of Ashbula County.
Thank you. Anybody else? Once again, I know I mentioned it quite a bit, but I, I just want to compliment the area businesses and the restaurants. Um, I know we're all getting, you know, the cabin fever, the longer this goes on, and, um, I was so bummed to see that the days are getting shorter. I think, oh, no, you know, but it's, you can go out, you could be safe, um, wear your mask. And, uh, the restaurants, uh, they're just doing an excellent job of, uh, keeping us safe and, and I, I really appreciate that because we do need to at least, uh, get out once in a while. All right, uh, anything else? Correspondence, Ms. Haynes?
Yes. So this is, um, this is from the RW Shelby family. To all concerned, it has come to our knowledge that there's consideration, let me take this off, it's hard to understand. It has come to our knowledge that there is consideration of renaming Station Avenue in Ashbula, Ohio in memory of RW Shelby, M.D. We all greatly appreciate the time and effort and this honor would entail. Dr. Shelby was a citizen of this community from nineteen fifty-eight until his death of natural causes in his own home in two thousand and twelve. In his profession as a surgeon and a family physician, he practiced in Ashbula from nineteen fifty-eight until he retired in nineteen ninety-two. His patients admired him so much that toward the end of his career, he had to stop taking new patients due to the fact that there was not enough office hours to see them all. During his career, he took care of multiple generations of many families. He served his community as Chief of Surgery at Ashbula General Hospital, which is now ACMC. He was also Chief of Staff at that facility, and for a time after his retirement, he was Head Physician of the Ashbula County Health Department. Outside of his medical practice, he served the community, holding a chair on the Metropolitan Housing Authority. He was fa, the founding member of the Commercial Bank in Ashbula, which is now US Bank. He also volunteered his time as a team doctor to Edgewood High School Football Team and Ringside for Golden Gloves Boxing Team. He served in the county, in the Army, in the South Pacific. He also listed, he's also listed in published books of Black Americans Who's Who. The community frequently asked him to be a featured speaker at public events, and even was pres, he was even presented the key to Ashbula City. He truly believed in his human kindness and was a regular contributor to People's Baptist Church toward their budget and their food bank while he was alive. It is a great honor to be able to communicate with you about someone whom we love so much. Graciously submitted the children and grandchildren of RW Shelby, M.D.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Very nice letter. Any, anybody?
Yes, I have an email.
Oh, okay.
Or were you asking for anybody to discuss?
What, does anybody want to comment on the letter?
Oh, it's very nice, very.
Okay, it was a very nice letter, yeah. And I, I, I don't think we appreciate nineteen fifty-eight, um, that's something, that was something, and so. Um, okay, I'm sorry, okay, go ahead. Ms. Sinski has another letter to read?
Please, uh, thank you, City Council, for your time and commitment to the health and well-being of your constituents of Ashbula. Ashbula County Water Watch, a dedicated group of professionals, farmers, students, and elders in Ashbula County, and whose priorities are clean air, water, land, and ecosystems, has filed an appeal to the new EPA air permit granted to Petman USA on July seventeenth, twenty-twenty. Ashbula residents have significantly higher levels of chronic illness, obesity, poverty, and less education than Ohio State averages. ACWW believes that the increased emissions proposed by Petman will likely adversely affect the health of all residents, especially our vulnerable, vulnerable populations in Ashbula, and has the potential to adversely affect the land, water, and air of Ashbula City and County. Ashbula County Water Watch also believes that the placement of a pig iron plant in Ashbula Harbor will negatively impact tourism and our designation of Best Main Street and the use of the Ashbula River and Lake Erie for recreational activities such as kayaking, swimming, fishing, birding, canoeing, and boating. Um, to learn more about the environmental impacts and concerns within the city and county of Ashbula, please join ACWW in a webinar series, Water Watch Wednesdays, coming this September on Wednesdays at 6:00 PM. All are welcome to attend, and it's free. Uh, registrations are required. To register, please visit the ACWW.us website. We look forward to a community discussion on how to build a more sustainable, financially viable, and beautiful city and county for all to enjoy. With kindness, Dr. T. Gallo, resident of Ashbula, ACWW member. And I did forward this email to y'all, and it had some attachments, but those were mainly talking about the water, Ashbula Water Wednesdays and our Water Watch Wednesdays, which I actually watched it last Wednesday.
Thank you. Any comments, anything? I, I think the residents, uh, even though we're meeting in this format, you are welcome to send correspondence to the city concerned and, and we will try to read them in a timely fashion until at time, you know, that we are able to have visitors again, so. All right, thank you. Anybody else have anything this evening?
I, I just have, um, for Mr. Timonier, um, I just wanted you to explain and clarify the Metro Parks project. It's not a city project, but if you could just give the public an update.
Uh, sure, so most of you probably saw, uh, the article that was in the paper. Of course, this has also been going on, from what I understand, now twenty years has been trying to get this, uh, bike trail down to, uh, the, the beach. And, uh, over the last five or so years, uh, it's, it's heated up, uh, mostly by, uh, the forces with, in the Metro Parks driving this project, and of course, also the city, uh, driving this project as well. Uh, it is not the city's project. No funds from the city are going into this project currently, um, that's out there. Although they have made improvements to, uh, curb ramps, uh, to sidewalks, and to some of the roadways, uh, that the bike trail will be on. Uh, this is a bike and pedestrian trail that is, uh, being installed right now. Uh, it will go from just north of the old ODOT facility on West Avenue, uh, traverse West Avenue north until you get to Smith Field. You'll have two options there. You can either go through the intersection at Lake Avenue, uh, and head on West Nineteenth Street to Michigan Avenue, or you can go into Smith Field around the park in the back of Grario Funeral Home, in the back of Andover Bank, and over to Michigan Avenue. Uh, it'll then head north on Michigan Avenue, um, eventually getting to West Eighth Street. Well, I believe that's where, uh, Lakeway Restaurant is, cutting across Lake Avenue, and then traversing, uh, down into the harbor, uh, around the Goodwill Drive area, or going down to Bridge Street, uh, eventually making its way to Walnut Boulevard, and then to, uh, Walnut Beach, finally connecting, uh, the River to Lake Trail, uh, in the state of Ohio. There are some, obviously, significant changes out there on the roadways. Um, uh, there'll be plenty of buffering, what they call buffering room between the bike lanes and the, uh, traffic lanes. As most of you who have ever been in downtown Cleveland, or downtown Columbus, or a lot of the downtowns anywhere, uh, you see these bike lanes that run smack dab either in the middle of those roads or along the parking areas of those downtowns. So, um, I know we don't have half the traffic that some of these other destinations do have. Uh, it is definitely going to be a learning curve, uh, for people, just to respect the roadways, uh, both for bicyclists, uh, runners, uh, walkers, whoever's on that trail, and, uh, and of course motorists. Um, I don't know about you, but I have already seen a significant decrease in the amount of speed on, uh, West Avenue by going to two lanes. So basically, what you see on there on Lake Avenue, or I'm sorry, on West Avenue right now is how it's going to be. Uh, the, the area that's kind of coned off right now to the east side of West Avenue will be where the buffering zone and the bike lanes will be. So there's approximately twenty-two feet on that side, uh, on the, on the area that used to be four lanes. Uh, there's approximately twenty-two feet. This was all designed by engineers that the Metro Park hired with oversight from ODOT. So, um, that's how this project finally came to be.
Anything else, Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. Mr. President, so it's just on the one side? It's not both sides?
That's correct. So what they, what they did and the way our, our roads are configured, um, it was easier to put wider lanes on one side to have traffic going both ways than to have a lane on each side. And especially on the northern section of West Avenue where we have all the businesses on the west side of the road. It didn't make sense to put a bike lane there where traffic would be turning in and out of those businesses. It was easier to keep it all on the east side.
And I, I think it's going to be interesting, you know, um, I drive by the old country club, and, you know, they put the walking path through there. And when they were doing that, I'm thinking, you know, I'm an old guy, I'm thinking, but I tell you what, every day I see lots of people walking on those walking paths, and I'm sure we're going to see lots of bikes, um, you know, on our bike trail. Uh, so it will take time to learn how to adjust, but we'll do it, yeah.
Mr. President, um, just a note on the country club, the old former country club, now the Red Brook Metro Park. Um, not only what you see with, that they did for asphalt, that is actually for ADA compliance so that, uh, people with disabilities can use part of that trail as well. Uh, but for many, many years, uh, Steve Wychuck with Wychuck Physical Therapy right here in town, uh, has mowed sections in the back of that golf course and all through that golf course, uh, approximately five-point-two-five miles, uh, through that golf course. And I can tell you, watching it from when the golf course shut down and he started mowing these things, um, till now, it is absolutely beautiful to walk through that course on those mowed areas and see how it's all grown up and back to, quote unquote, back to nature. Uh, last year, we did a planting event, uh, through there, uh, with the Nature Conservancy and the Metro Parks, uh, to start establishing the, um, the, the original habitat, uh, back to there. There are people that fish down there constantly and are pulling just huge fish out of that, out of that stream. Um, so it is beautiful. And when you talk about the bike trail, uh, this weekend, I, I happened to do seventy miles on our trail, uh, going from three oh-seven south. And I can tell you with certainty, every time I'm on that trail, it is loaded with people, not only walking, uh, with strollers and family, uh, or biking or running, um, and actually, the area folks who qualified for the Boston Marathon this year, but unfortunately are not able to run it because they canceled it, are doing the virtual of Boston on our trail, uh, I think actually this coming weekend. So, um, it is, gets a ton of use, and I think now connecting that to Bridge Street, uh, and into the Ashbula Harbor down to Walnut Beach, um, is going to be a spectacular ride for a lot of people.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? If not, we will adjourn, we'll turn off the TV and the microphone, and we are going to go into executive session.